You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening. We'll call this Monday, September 8th Fayetteville City Council Meeting to Order. Would also like to recognize that there is an overflow room next door which has some folks in it, so we welcome you as well. If everyone at this point would stand, I'm out of breath running upstairs. Would stand and remain standing please Reverend Sonny Kelly, who's the Director for Programming at Fayetteville Urban Ministry, will do our invocation and then tell you about some great things that Fayetteville Urban Ministry does after the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Creator, lover of our souls, our Father in Heaven, we thank you that you brought this group of responsible citizens together to represent the larger body of citizens. We thank you for the responsibility you've given them. We ask you right now for truth, for justice, for peace to prevail. We ask you for respect and for love that we share it amongst each other as you've taught us to do. We ask you that we can be your hands and your feet throughout this city that we love so much. Help us to remind each other of how much we love each other and how much we love you. We pray that above all things and all things that happen here tonight, that you allow your fruit to prevail. Love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. And in your name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Kelly, tell us about Urban Ministry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you all so much for this opportunity. Fayetteville Urban Ministry, many people don't know, has been in this community for forty years now. We're celebrating our fortieth birthday. We just met with Pastor Blackman of Hay Street United Methodist Church where we started out of the basement there with a few volunteers and a little bit of money. Today we have about a million dollar budget and we serve over eight thousand members of this community, the neighbors in need. Our mission is to show God's compassion for our neighbors in need and thus build our community together. At the same time, we're ecumenical, we're open, we serve everyone from every background, race, creed, sexual orientation, religious background. What we want to do is be the hands and the feet of our God in heaven and serve this community. We thank you all for your support. We're grateful for the city of Fayetteville supporting us through the years, especially the CDBG has helped us to serve those in need of home repairs with our Nehemiah Project. And I'll just let you know, please, anyone in the room, if you know of someone who's in need, we have four programs. One is the Emergency Assistance Program, which is the heart of what we do. We serve people with food, clothing, and emergency financial support. And those are families as well as homeless individuals and children. We also have school supplies and fire kits for when people have natural disasters in their homes. Our second program is called the Adult Literacy Program. That's kind of the mind of what we do. And that is where we're giving people a hand up, not just a handout. In that program, we train adults ages sixteen who've dropped out of school and up, how to read, computer literacy, English as a second language, which as you know is becoming an increasing need in this community, as well as computer skills, and yes, how to get a job. We have a fully equipped internet access computer lab where we provide this to our community every day of the week, nine to eight, Monday through Thursday, and nine to four on Friday. Our third program is called the Nehemiah Project. And it's a program where we give free home repairs to low-income homeowners, especially our elderly, within the city, sponsored by the CDBG, right here in our city of Fayetteville. But we also have grant monies that help us to do things outside the city. And then finally, we have our Find a Friend program. That's our eyes for the future. We're looking at serving at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred at-risk youth, mostly court-involved youth, to fight recidivism. We have a ninety-four percent success rate of fighting recidivism, increasing academics, and increasing behavior. And just to give you all an idea, we talk a lot about tax dollars here. It costs about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to house a youth in a YDC, a youth development or youth detention center. It costs about a thousand five hundred to put them through a Find a Friend after-school youth program, where we do college tours, character development, and we get to know the kids and get them a mentor. There are many organizations in this community, but we're grateful that you've given us a moment to share with others. If you know someone in need, please send them our way. If you know someone who would like to help others in need, please, in the name of Jesus, send them our way. As the Director of Operations Programs, I'm in charge of development and writing grants, et cetera. And the more help we get from the community, whether you're volunteering, giving your clothing, giving food, or bringing money, please know the better we do. And everything that we get goes out a hundred percent free. If you give me clothing, it'll go out on the back of a homeless person, a family in need, that day that it comes to me. And we have an eighty-seven percent direct program ratio, which is to say for every dollar we spend, eighty-seven cents go directly back into the community. Only thirteen cents go to general and administrative costs. So you can trust us, we trust you, we thank you for your support, and we hope that our partnership will continue.
Mr. Kelly, how many of our residents do you serve annually?
We serve annually, last year actually, we served upwards of nine thousand. So each year between eight and ten thousand people a year.
Thank you so much for doing what you do.
A pleasure. God bless you. Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you. Counsel, at this time I'll accept a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council approve item four point oh, the agenda, with the exception of item eight point zero one.
That's removal of eight point zero one?
That's affirmative.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Davy is the second. Council discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item five point zeros announcements and recognition, I'd like to move to Councilmember Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fayetteville Beautiful has taken the leadership on the Big Sweet North Carolina project. And this Saturday morning at eight AM, September thirteenth, we're going to be cleaning up Cross Creek and inside the water, pretty deep right now, it's over my head. And we have the sixty-fifth group, Fort Bragg Military Police joining us, as well as Fayetteville Terry Sanford's Government AP class. So they'll be joining us this Saturday morning at AM to clean up Cross Creek from Rowan Street, Bragg Boulevard, all the way to the Dog Park at the Botanical Garden. And at the same time, Methodist University is going to be cleaning up the students' 401 bypass. So we're focused, not only Fayetteville Beautiful, but other, you know, groups are joining and making Fayetteville a cleaner, more beautiful city. And secondly, boards and commissions will be making recommendations tonight for council's approval, but we do have some vacancies that we do need to fill. So they'll be available for the rest of this month till October first for the following vacancies. We need Historic Resources Commission, two members there, and historian, A-N historian. The Taxi Review Board needs two taxi industry representatives. The Wrecker Review Board needs a chairman who's unaffiliated with the wrecker industry. And Stormwater Advisory Board, this is an important one, needs three environmentally concerned citizens. So those are the vacancies that we need filled. So check with the city's website or call our deputy city clerk over there, or Jane Starling, you're the city clerk, Ms. Jane Starling, deputy city clerk, about boards and commissions and sign up, because the city of Fayetteville does rely on its citizens' advisory boards and commissions to aid in our decisions to govern effectively. So thank you very much for joining up, signing up with our boards and commissions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. I want to recognize Councilmember Art, but before I do that, I do see former County Commissioner Johnny Evans in the audience, and also former mayor, former city council member Mabel Smith. Ms. Smith, welcome, both of you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share some news. I had a call today, we had a chance to go up to Durham a couple weeks ago and visit Durham. And while we were in the Durham city town, I had a chance to meet Mr. Peter Wallace with the Bulls. And he gave me a call today, and he's extended an offer to all the active-duty military members here in Fayetteville, Fort Bragg, that they can go to the Bulls game on September the eleventh, the day we honor the nation with the Remembrance of September eleventh. And with an active-duty ID card, they can get into the Bulls game for free. And this is pretty significant, because the Bulls, this is their World Series for the International League, triple-A baseball, the World Series, and it'll be game three against Pawtucket. And so they've made that military appreciation night. So any active-duty member listening or here tonight, you can get in with your ID card. And if your family chooses to go, you can reserve tickets at the Durham Bulls. You can do it online, durhambulls.com, and the tickets are ten dollars, very reasonable price to see a baseball game. The other thing I want to share is on the twenty-fifth of, or correction, the fifth of October, we'll be celebrating Warrior Jam two thousand fourteen. If you're not familiar with Warrior Jam, that's a celebration of Fayetteville's patriotic relationship with our military members here. It'll be a patriotic outreach day, an all-day live concert down at Festival Park, and it'll be rock, country, funk, and spoken word. And this is from eleven AM to ten PM, so it'll be an all-day event. And I want to encourage you to come and participate as we reach out and celebrate our great friends at Fort Bragg and their service.
Thank you, Mr. Art. I was neglected, former Representative Mary McAllister, welcome as well. Thank you. Go back to Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am excited, or we are excited, to announce a new employee program called Core Value Awards. And I would like to introduce our Assistant City Manager, Jay Reinstine, to the front and center, sir.
Very much. And I am also very excited about this new program, the Core Value Awards. Again, it is a new employee recognition program designed by employees for employees, citywide program. We had representatives on this committee. All city departments were represented. We have some of those employees here this evening, so we're really excited about that. We also have the leadership team, Rebecca Carter, Rogers Carter, and also Ade Lewis, who are our leadership team. And I just wanted to thank them. We also had a council liaison member, Councilmember Kathy Jensen, who sat on our team meetings over the last five months, really providing that leadership, those great ideas, that energy and that passion that really helped move this program forward. So what I'd like to do now is, if I can get Councilmember Jensen to come up forward and say a few words about this new program, that would be great. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Jay. I can say I have had a very, it has been a very, I've got a lot of knowledge of what goes on with the city, and I've been very impressed with this committee, and I've enjoyed it thoroughly. I had some issues with my mother's health that I couldn't be at all the meetings, and I would like to say thank you for having my back. They always kept me informed, and I have really enjoyed this committee, and they've done a lot of hard work. I'm just going to give a few points of what it's about to kind of start kicking it off. It is the CVA Awards. Of course, you know in my mind what that means. We buy, within three years, hopefully, you'll be at the Crown Coliseum, and everybody will want to walk down a red carpet, is what is in my mind. The background of it is, the new employee recognition program is for city employees to reinforce behavior that exemplifies the city's core values. The award was created by twenty-one city employees in various departments and a member of senior management, which was Jay, and a city council member, which was me. Specific descriptions of the city's core values can be found on the city's website. Our website is www.cityoffayetteville.org/courvaluaseaward. The nomination criteria is, all city and Fayetteville employees, full-time, part-time, and temporary, are eligible. All employees and members of the public can make a nomination. Nominations can be for an individual employee or a group of employees. Must be for accomplishments that occurred within one year prior to the deadline of the current nomination period. Only restriction is an employee cannot nominate themselves. The nomination forms can be found online or on the city of Fayetteville's website, in various drop boxes throughout the city office location, parks and recreation locations, and fire departments. Nominations must provide detailed information about what makes the nominee's actions extraordinary relating to the city's core values. Deadline for submission is May thirty-first for July awards, and November thirtieth for January awards. Recipients are selected by a committee following an assessment of each nominee's accomplishments relating to the city core values. The awards will be a plaque awarded at the ceremony, a letter of accommodation from the city manager placed in a personal folder, breakfast with the city manager, and a gift chosen by the award recipient from a selected catalog. Our updates include, our updates that include are, all employees received a letter signed by the city manager on August twenty-eighth announcing the CVA. Employee committee members are conducting department meetings to introduce the CVA to employees in the respective departments. Information on the CVA is now available on the city's website and the city of Fayetteville web. Posters of the CVA are being placed in libraries and recreation centers. This committee has worked very hard, so I hope everybody that is listening out there doesn't take it for granted and that we do make it a success. I understand that this has been tried before, and it, you know, just didn't get a lot of participation. So help me get the red carpet and everybody try to help. Thank you. And you get a video now.
An exciting new program is coming to the city of Fayetteville. The Core Values Award is designed to create a culture of recognition, increase employee engagement, recognize and motivate higher performance, and reinforce behavior that exemplifies the city core values of serving with respect. One of the first initiatives I undertook as city manager was to ask employees how we are doing as an organization. An employee opinion survey is like a performance review of our systems. Knowing where we stand with our employees enables us to identify areas for improvement. The results identified several top priorities, one of which was improving employee recognition and appreciation. City council also considered the results of the employee survey during their strategic planning retreat.
Council identified employee appreciation as a top priority, leading to the development of an employee appreciation program in which I am proud to serve as city council liaison. This program is comprised of members of each city department and is a program designed and implemented by employees for employees.
All employees are eligible for recognition, and any city employee or member of the public can make a nomination. Employee recognition committee members will review the nomination forms for award selection based on an assessment of each nominee's accomplishments against the components of the city's core values of serving with respect. To nominate an employee who deserves to win a Core Values Award, visit www.cityoffayetteville.org and look for the Core Values Award. Fill out the nomination form and click submit. Forms and drop boxes are also available in City Hall, Recreation Centers, and Libraries. The Core Values Award will be given twice a year during the city's semi-annual Service Recognition Award Ceremony. We want to make sure that city employees get the recognition that they deserve for their hard work and dedication. I am very excited about this new program, and I hope you are too. For more information, call four-three-three-one-six-seven-four, or visit www.cityoffayetteville.org and look for the Core Values Award. Will you be next?
So you all, council members, have those wonderful shirts in pens in front of you, and they say, "Will you be next?" Please feel free to nominate somebody. If you've run into one of those great employees that have done something over and above the bar, please nominate those people. I also wanted to do something special now, too. Our committee thought, for you, Ms. Jensen, if you could please step up to the podium, for all of your hard work, your leadership, your passion, your ideas, we would like to say thank you with this bouquet of flowers that have been under there. It's amazing, for three months. And we didn't have to water them, they are real. So thank you so much from our committee. We really, really appreciate that. Thank you. We would also like to ask Rebecca Rogers Carter to please come up. And we have more flowers. Thank you again for your leadership and all the work that you have done on this committee.
Appreciate it.
It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to Ade Lewis. Thank you for all your work on this project. It's been amazing. Thanks. And to you guys for all your work, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. We expect big things over the next few months and years. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Counsel.
At this time, Counsel, we're going to have some recognitions in the audience. If we can have Jerry Wilson come to the podium along with our mayor, Nat Robertson. Jerry Wilson is going to be presented by the mayor's certificate of recognition. The certificate of recognition says, "On behalf of the members of city council and more than two-hundred-and-eight-thousand citizens here in Fayetteville, we hereby present this certificate of recognition in appreciation to you, Jerry Wilson, for your dedication and determination in defeating cancer, and for sharing your story of challenges, courage, and compassion through your book, 'Cancer is a Blessing.'"
I am humbled and honored to say this.
Tell us a couple of words about your book, and where folks can get it.
Well, first of all, if somebody had told me a year ago, or ten years ago, or forty years ago I was going to write a book, you know, I would have had to have committed him somewhere. But having gone through cancer twice, the first time was lymphoma, Hodgins, that wasn't too bad. The bad news is I was fourth stage. So that was a pretty big fight with a very low twenty-seven percent survival rate. And then about two years ago, had cancer again, and some people said, you know, why don't you, you've had so much experience with it, why don't you put it in writing, you know, so that someone who has cancer or a family member? I mean, if I ask of a raise of hands and hear of who has cancer, who has a friend who has cancer, or who knows somebody that has cancer, you'd raise your, you know, you'd raise your hand. But I wanted everybody to know that cancer is not a death sentence. You know, it requires an incredible fight, it requires a background of faith, but one of the most important things that I tried to emphasize in the book is attitude. With the right attitude, in fact, I was thinking tonight, seeing all these red shirts, with the right attitude, you can pretty much accomplish, I think, anything that you want to do. And I know that our fine mayor has read the book. I haven't got the book report yet, but I am honored and thrilled to death that y'all would recognize it. Appreciate it.
Where can the book be purchased?
You can get it on amazon.com, and you can get it in one of two forms. You can get it in book, as you see here, or you can download You can get it in book, as you see here, or you can download it to your Kindle. You can go to Barnes &amp; Noble. Now, they don't have it on stock, but they will order it for you. Or if you see me in the grocery store or any other place, normally I've got one or two on me, and, and the recent, on Amazon, I think they're $16 and some change, and, the ones I have, I sell them for 15. And we've been very fortunate. We, we've sold almost 400, and it's only been out a couple of months. The key to something like this, though, is, is greater recognition. But my thought when I wrote the book was, I'm going to have a bestseller. Now, here is my definition of a bestseller. If I can help one person cope with cancer, or a family member, or a friend better cope with this horrible disease, then I've got a bestseller. And, and I've had several responses, knowing that this has played a small part in helping them.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. At this time, we'll have Ms. Nakia Ariel Hightower to come to the podium along with council member Bobby Hurst. Council member Hurst always gets honored to present certificates to beautiful princesses. City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, certificate of recognition. On behalf of the members of city council and more than 208,000 citizens here in Fayetteville, we hereby present this certificate of recognition in appreciation of Ms. Nakia Ariel Hightower for 2014 National American Miss North Carolina Pre-Teen. Her dedication in representing the City of Fayetteville with pride. We look forward to many more accomplishments and success. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. At this time, I would like Mrs. Alicia Dedman and Mr. Bobby Washington to come to the podium. You'll be per, getting a certificate presented by our mayor, Nat Robertson. Certificate of appreciation. This goes to Great Oak Youth Development Center. Certificate of appreciation for your continuous dedication to community service and the positive development of local youth. We are truly inspired by the outstanding commitment to our great city. City of history, heroes, and a hometown feeling. Thank you so much, Great Oak Youth Development Center, for all you've done in our community.
Continue today. Thank you. Bobby, good show. Good show.
Very quickly, on behalf of the Great Oak Board of Directors, our very, very productive volunteers, as well as the staff, and of course, our families and the boys that we represent, we thank you very much.
Counsel, at this point, we will go into item 6.0, which is our public forum. This is a time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in the city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes to address the city council on related city issues. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have already signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may appear later on in the agenda, we ask that you hold your comments till that time. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium, please. Please state your name clearly with your home address, for the record. Then you will see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow. At that point, you'll have 30 seconds left. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend that time. Now, I've got the, the privilege to allow up to 30 minutes for this, and we will go there. We've got 13 speakers. If all 13 take three minutes, we've run over time. So I ask that you be complete with your thoughts, but please be brief, knowing that somebody at the end of the line may be cut off if, if you don't get your message across in time. So knowing that you might want to plan for two minutes, and then if you go a little bit over, you're, you're still good. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, would you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Ralph Locklear. Mr. Ralph Locklear.
I'd also like, oh, he's coming, okay. I'd like to recognize a former council member, Wade Fowler, who just walked into the room. Come forward, Mr. Locklear. Please state your name and home address.
My name is Ralph Locklear. Home address is 150 Square Lane in Shannon. The reason why I'm here before you today is to do, one of two things, is to introduce what I've got going on here in the community, and number two, to ask for your support. I'm a local entrepreneur, been in business since 2004. I've developed a product that's been patented, and it's a safety device that I think that can revolutionize vehicle safety. As of right now, I've got a prototype and a process of trying to get featured on Shark Tank and want to use as many outlets as possible. My goal, my vision, is to introduce this product to as many people that I can. I want to get a good support here locally before I try to take it outside of the state. And I have a couple photographs that can illustrate what this product is and how it can save lives. I came up with this product by seeing someone lose their life because they were trapped by their seatbelt. They had one of the tools that, you know, will help them escape, but they wasn't able to reach it when they need it the most. And my device that I've created was out of necessity, and I'm looking to get support and hopefully create jobs by manufacturing the product here right in our home area. If you guys would like to take a look, I've got some photographs that illustrate exactly what the product does.
Is that something you can pass out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them around.
And so for, if anyone just watching would like to get more information about the product, you can visit rescuedevice.com, or you can reach out to me directly. Number's 910-474-6778 with any questions or comments. I've ta, I've already taken the product up to the head of Transportation, Highway Patrol. Everyone that's seen the product loves it, thinks it's a great idea. So I'm really just hoping I can get a lot of support here in our hometown to make this product be, become the next safety center for vehicles.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Anthony Tirina. Mr. Anthony Tirina. Our next speaker is Mr. Reginald Cromarty. Mr. Reginald Cromarty.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, my name is Marshall Hartsfield. My address is 5593 Duncan Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening. And I'm speaking to you concerning the proposed chicken plant that Sanderson Farm has for the Cedar Creek area. The type of poultry operation that Sanderson Farms is planning for the industrial park in the Cedar Creek area will displace wildlife by converting habitat to spray fields. It will add nutrients and chemicals to a river system that is already overloaded with contaminants. It'll increase unpleasant odors and potentially contaminate groundwater. In addition to the impacts this chicken operation will have on air and water quality, the processing plant, the spray fields, and the semi-trucks running to and from the plant will have a ne, negative impact on land values and the tranquil character and quality of a residential community. The majority of the citizens who are opposing the Sanderson Farms plant are not opposing chicken plants. They're opposing the location of a large-scale slaughterhouse and processing plant adjacent to the Cape Fear River in a residential area. When Cumberland County purchased the land for the industrial park, most folks in the community expected businesses and industries to locate inside the industrial park. They expected industries that would have a footprint inside the park. The footprint of the Sanderson Farms poultry operation will look more like a spider web than a rectangle. The trucks carrying chickens and waste will spread for many miles outside the park to the hundreds of chicken houses in the adjacent communities. Sanderson Farms will transfer their responsibility for many of their waste issues to local farmers and businesses, just as they have done in Texas and Alabama. This type of large-scale slaughterhouse and packing unit is better suited to a rural area than a residential community. I'm a forester, I didn't neglect to go over that. I graduated from North Carolina State University. I've been a resident of Cumberland County for more than 27 years, and I've been operating consulting forestry business for 22 years. I'm very proud to say that all of the landowners I work for in the Cedar Creek area are opposed to the construction of the chicken processing plant and the use of their land or adjacent land to dispose of chicken waste. I went fishing on the river last week. My friends and I saw more than 40 boats on the river. People were fishing, skiing, kayaking, jet skiing, and swimming. We saw a diversity of wildlife, and the scent, the chicken processing plant that they have proposed will diminish the value of the river, eh, for recreation and for the wildlife that utilizes the river and the surrounding counties. The City of Wilson opposed the chicken plant, and I think we should do the same.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Richard Fradenborough.
My name is Richard Fradenberg, and I live at 7081 Kingsland, Kingsland Loop, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I live directly behind Zackby's, and I heard Mr. Hurst say that the Cross Creek Mall, or the Cross Creek Creek, was overflowing up to his waist. He should be in my backyard because it's about up to my knees. I was here last month and talked. I spoke with the city engineer three times since then, and was told, "We're working on it. We're working on it. We're working on it." She was supposed to have a representative here tonight to speak with me, but I guess they were too busy. I'm not sure, but the rain today and the rain last Wednesday is washing my yard away. I've already had one of my leach lines exposed, and I understand we're not getting sewers until 2025, so if I get three more of those exposed, I'm going to just run it into the street, I guess, but something has to be done out there. That, that overflow plant, that overflow, I, I, I think I'm done. No one seems to be paying attention. This gentleman is talking. Yes, sir?
We were, turn the, turn the clock off, Madam Clerk, if you would here. I don't want to take up your time, I'm going to let you continue, but we did get updates on your particular problem, and have asked staff to talk with you, so maybe when you're done, we...
I've heard, I've heard nothing from anyone. Nothing, other than I get some email from Mr. Moan now and then, but...
Do me a favor?
Yes.
In a minute and 46 seconds, how about meeting our engineer at the back door, and she'll, she'll brief you on, she'll brief you on what we received.
Thank you.
Do you want to continue?
No, I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If I see the engineer, I'll, I'll be happy, I guess.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Grady Dobson.
Welcome, Mr. Dobson.
Good afternoon, or, or tonight. My name's Grady Dobson. I live at 4577 Cedar Creek Road in Cedar Creek Community. I'm here representing my neighbor and community friends regarding, you know, this important vote that we're going to have in the very near future about this proposed Sanderson Farms facility in, in the park. I am retired from North Carolina Division of Water Quality. My job for the last 26 years of my life has been, I was directly involved in the permitting and inspecting of these type of facilities, you know, chicken farms, animal farms, all this kind of stuff. This is not a good fit for this community. There's, there's, I've talked with a gentleman today, another elected official in the county, and, you know, we talked, you know, for about almost 45 minutes about issues and what-ifs. I mean, there's, there's been a lot of not information. The thing we had at the Crown the other, other week, you know, everything that everybody said was not, was not wrong. I mean, we just didn't hear the other side of the story. We've had, there's no information, you know, the due diligence, in my opinion, is not quite complete. I did some due diligence of my own last week, and I, I found the permit that they have in Kinston, and it's not quite the same fit as we have here. That place is, I know some of you've been there, and I've heard that, you know, you didn't have any smell, there was no feathers. I kind of find that hard to believe. This, this particular facility in that location is a lot different. It is kind of like an interstate situation. The building is way off the road, the treatment plant's behind it, and the field's behind that. The soils are completely different. The soils, what we can find out around this area are very tight clays. It's going to take a lot more land to assimilate the same waste coming from this place. And what, what is the waste? Based on that permit they have, they said it's going to be very similar to ours, you're looking at 178 trucks of waste a day, a day. That's two, 1.2 million gallons of wastewater being spread over a land that's, that's surrounded by hotels, businesses, rest homes, and, and urban setting. And, you know, what-ifs? What if you have a, an ammonia leak there? How are you going to handle all that? You know, the gentleman I talked to said, "Well, that's a what-if." Well, it's a what-if, but it has happened. Look what happened in Tar Heel just back in, in July. They had to evacuate for five miles. That's it.
You got 30 seconds, if you want to...
Well, there, there's just a lot of other issues dealing with this, you know, the compliance of these things, you know. The treatment system is a, is a mechanical, live organism. The City of Fayetteville has, has something like this. And, and, you know, you have problems, you have smells, and this is going to directly bother people that live in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
Our next speaker is Dr. Rakesh Gupta.
Hey, Dr. Gupta, good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Rakesh Gupta. I'm a physician, and I live at 2595 Wixen Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am also here to express my concerns regarding the proposed chicken plan in the industrial park. I am a local physician. I have been a resident here for 24 years, and I call this home. I'm proud to do so, and I have seen very significant progress in our city in the last 20 years. We are, as a community, a community of citizens, and we are a community of citizens. We are, as a community, very sensitized about the image that our city projects, not just here, but to the people that visit us or hear about us over social media and through regular press and TV. I'll just take a couple of minutes. I did attend the meeting at the Crown Coliseum hosted by the Chamber and the Alliance. I came away less than convinced. We are talking about a company that proposes to process or slaughter over 1 million chickens per week and generate, as the gentleman just said, 178 trucks' worth of waste. It is going to require a very large quantity of wastewater that is going to be sprayed over the land that is ill-equipped to handle that waste. There is no doubt in my mind that this is going to cause us a problem. On the one hand, this would generate 1,000 jobs, very desirable outcome, especially in a community like ours. However, the quality of jobs at $11.71 hourly wage and an anticipated undesirable annual turnover of over 40% per year is unlikely to be a permanent job opportunity. The work is nasty, it is very hard, and very undesirable, I'm told. The environmental impact is foremost in my mind. The surface water contamination, the groundwater contamination, the runoff into the Cape Fear River, and the long-term impact of that contamination, as was just pointed out. I'm learning that the soil is very ill-equipped to handle this much waste. The odor, the feathers, all these concentrated animal feeding operations, or CAFOs as they are called, generate large amount of manure and nutrients that are going into the ground, such as the nitrogen, the phosphate, the ammonia, and they will eventually, almost certainly, find their way into the groundwater. This is... The odor is already an issue in the downtown area from time to time, and this will only be exacerbated. The public health issue is an even more important one. Asthma, chronic respiratory issues around these plants, coliform bacteria, air quality, insect vectors, increased pathogens, increased illness, and I'm very certain that future recruitment will actually suffer. I'm also concerned that the land values will drop. I'm asking that you consider slowing this train, provide a greater opportunity to research and investigate the impact on health and environment. I truly understand the economic impact. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jackie Taylor.
Hello, Ms. Taylor.
Hi. My name's Jackie Taylor, and I live at 1040 Old Vander Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for being here and listening. My husband and I bought our home, bought a large parcel of land, and built our dream home just this year. We chose this area to get away from the high volume of traffic and enjoy some pure country air. I'm sure you can appreciate our anxiety when we found that Sanderson is trying to move into our backyard. Now, whether it is truly your or my backyard, close proximity or not even close, we all need to be diligent in knowing the facts. We have already heard the main complaints of what will happen or potentially happen. We've been told that our concerns are not valid and that those things that we're so worried about won't come to fruition. We were told that our questions would be answered. This has not been the case. We've been told that the industrial park would be used for industry, jogging, and walking trails. This is not what has happened. Pick Billingsley stood in front of hundreds of people last week and said that there is no smell associated with the slaughterhouse in Kingston and that it would not be an issue here. I regret to say that this is also not the case. I personally went to Kingston. I was asked to go there by local Chamber members and CEO Douglas Peters in an attempt to demonstrate how great Sanderson is. This is what I found, and to protect the individuals who are so kind to talk to me, I will not reveal business names or personal names. However, the two businesses immediately in front of the Kingston Slaughterhouse I went to. At the first one, I was told, in fact, there is a terrible smell, mostly on hot summer days. The second business, I spoke with four people, all of whom said it smells very bad. One person went so far as to say that the smell made it difficult to simply come and go from their car. The sixth person I spoke with said, "No comment." I'll let you to wonder what that meant. If the smell happens here in this community, what are we going to do about it? Well, not a whole lot. I made a complaint today about the smell coming from Valley Pro Tem to Deener's Fayetteville office, and from what I can tell, the smell's not going away. I spoke with Mr. Robert Hayden, an engineer at Deener, and he told me that odor regulation is very difficult to enforce. This being said, and what I was told firsthand from the neighbors of Sanderson's Kingston plant, are you really going to believe that odor is not going to be an issue? I am asking the council tonight, I'm begging you guys to help us, the members, the community of Cedar Creek, by making those who have made promises to our community accountable. Let's see the jogging trails. Let's see these promises in writing. If Sanderson is to come here, let's make a stipulation that there will not be chicken houses here. We just want it in writing.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mabel C. Smith.
Is that former council member Mabel C. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
My name is Mabel C. Smith. I live at 1606 Deep Creek Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28312. A lifelong resident of Cumberland County, to God be the glory. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem. It's a pleasure for me to stand before you tonight to reiterate the fact that I am against this Sanderson Chicken Farm. I need not tell you, I think you all know. And I will not take up your time, maybe other speakers, in saying the same thing that has already been said. I concur with what has already been said. I would like to add the fact that this does not only affect the residents in the Cedar Creek area, this affects the whole city of Fayetteville, the entire county of Cumberland. When all this filth goes into the Cape Fear River, with this pollution, that's going to set all over everywhere. So don't think that it's just something that's just east of the river. It's all over. And I'd also like to make mention, too, that we're thinking from the fact that you're talking about incentive, tax incentive. For those citizens that don't know, this means that if you're going to give them an incentive, this is taxpayers' money, some money that all anybody own property in the county or city. This is taxpayers' money. So let us not sit here and just think of the dollar sign or those 1,000 jobs they're claiming they are going to do for us. What's the cost going to be for that? The lives that it's going to affect, their health, the welfare of our county, the welfare of our city, and not only, it goes as far as the entire state. We don't need our elected officials to turn their backs on the citizens and look only at the dollar sign and promote Sanders. And we know the Chamber of Commerce is for it because that's what they're to do, go out and try to bring in more bids. But there are other businesses that could be brought in rather than this chicken slaughterhouse. So we're here tonight, we are asking you, please, those of you, if you have made your mind, take a second thought, listen to the citizens. If you haven't made up your mind, make it up now and say, "We are going to represent the citizens of the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County." Thank you, and may I ask all those that are here in opposition of this Sanderson Farm to please stand?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Reginald Wells. Mr. Reginald Wells.
Hello, Pastor Wells.
Hi. How you doing?
Good, hope you are.
I'm well. Ms. Smith is a tough act to follow. I serve as a pastor, by the way. To Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, Davey, to the councilpersons, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Reginald Wells. I live at 2501 Woodwind Drive here in the city of Fayetteville, 28304. I serve as the pastor of the Falling Run Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at 2852 Cedar Creek Road here in the city of Fayetteville. Actually, Falling Run is located immediately beyond the entrance to the industrial park. Tonight, first of all, I want to say that Falling Run, we will celebrate 142 years of existence on next month. That church has provided a service in the Cedar Creek and Cumberland community, as I stated, for 142 years, and we're very proud of the accomplishments and the persons and lives that the Falling Run Baptist Church has impacted. Tonight, along with members of our church and the community, come to say to you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and county commissioners, excuse me, and councilperson, I guess I want to talk to the commissioners also, that's another meeting, that we are in opposition to the proposed Sanderson Chicken Plant. We would ask that the council would vote no concerning the location of the chicken facility in the Cedar Creek area, particularly in the industrial park. I know that there has been a lot of superlatives stated concerning how wonderful the Sanderson Chicken operation is. Let me give you a personal story. I passed it and lived in Duplin County, North Carolina, for 18 years. Many of you know Duplin County. It's the home of swine, it's the home of mini-turkey and chicken operations. I have parcels of property that I still own there. I have a house that I own there. I was there the other day. I saw firsthand, and I served as a county commissioner there for 10 years, I saw firsthand feathers littered in driveways and in lawns. I saw firsthand feathers littered on the side of the roads. I smelled firsthand the odor from brutal houses, from spray fields. I saw the flies and the different things that were located there. I know a lot of good things have been said about that, but I encourage you to think hard and long about locating such a facility in the Cedar Creek area, particularly near a church that's 142 years old, that has impacted lives and will continue to impact lives. In conclusion, I'm a Baptist preacher, I have three closers, but I promise you tonight I only have one. In conclusion, over the years, much work has gone into making sure that Fayetteville and the city of Fayetteville is an all-American city. Please ask yourselves why bring a chicken processing plant within the borders of an all-American city? Thank you. God bless you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Pastor Wells.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Harmony Sell.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Harmony Sell in Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28303. I'm not here to talk about the chicken farms, even though I'm sure that the vegans and the vegetarians totally appreciate this meeting tonight. But, no, I'm back here to try to figure out another solution to my daughter's situation and all. I've been now to county commissioners' meeting, county commissioners' offices, lawyers' offices, and it's not going anywhere. And I have people telling me that, you know, people are going to be contacting me, and they're not. So I'm kind of curious about that. And I'm also receiving strange emails, because most of the time, whenever I come here, I say my email address, which is harmonyolivia@aol.com, but also in my court file, there's emails in there with that on there. So these email captions, I'm not opening them, are saying Harmony Sell Brown, which I testified against Attorney Brown, and my name was put all in the paper because of it, because of what he did. And then also Herzog, which is, was the attorney who practiced with the judge who thinks that child abuse is okay. So I'm just curious to know, what am I going to do? I mean, I got all this evidence and everything, and talking to someone today about how she plainly stated how they were putting hot sauce on her hands and taping her fingers together with a broken bone that wasn't tended to until the next day. I'm just lost because no one seems to want to take my case, and I've been verbalized this by attorneys, saying, "Oh, this is the girl who testified against that attorney." And so because, I guess, they're friends, or because it's a community of their own of lawyers, I'm just being discredited and not heard, and mainly, a child who's been screaming out is not being heard. And it's been, it's been, it's been years now, and all this stuff has been documented, and I just, I can't give up, you know? Like someone said, you know, "Why are you going back?" Because I'm not going to stop, you know? I've written letters, I've done a lot of things, and it's embarrassing because I've lost friends. Everyone wants to know what's going on, and no one knows that I'm coming here. No one knows what I do, really. But my life is just being put on hold, and it sucks because I really have things to do, and with this in the back of my mind, I'm not doing it. So that's how I feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sell.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Justin Smith.
Mr. Smith, your timing is about perfect. You're at about 27 minutes, so...
I'd like to say thank you, just for the opportunity to speak and hear a little bit that we had to say here this evening. My name is Justin Smith, 2961 Cedar Creek Road, Fayetteville, 28312. I'm a resident of the Cedar Creek community. My livelihood is in agriculture. And city council, I'm here to tell you tonight, and hopefully the Chamber and the Alliance can hear some of this at some point in time, and hopefully the county commissioners, and anybody else in the public who may see this may be listening. Sanderson Farms is not a Cedar Creek problem. Sanderson Farms is a Cumberland County problem. It is a city of Fayetteville problem. This is a problem because the number 21,900 that represents the loaded trucks that will come into our county annually, loaded trucks being with the birds on them to be processed. That's the only count coming in loaded. If we're going to talk about once they exit out after they've been emptied out and cleaned out, then we're talking 43,800 trucks. The problem is this: if you look at our county on a map, in fact, Mr. Peters on the Chamber website has a nice picture of a chicken right where the business park is, but it's almost, it's in the relevance of being in the center of the county. It's not on the side of the county, not at the top, not at the bottom, it's almost in the center of the county. What will happen in due time, should the plant go through, there will be another feed mill built. They will not build a $100 million facility down here without having room for expansion to do more, to grow more, to produce more, to make more money. The next feed mill will be built in or around proximity to Cumberland County. It will be placed there so that the opportunity can be grabbed for outside counties, for Robeson County, for Hope County, for Hornet County, for Bladen County. There's already some farms in Sampson County, and by the way, we do have a Sanderson Farm in Cumberland County about seven to eight miles down 210 from the business park. At the current time, it's been here about four or five years. It is a problem for everybody, though, because once all this comes into place and all these surrounding counties and farms in our county come, they're running down all our highways that funnel back to the business park. That's 401, that's Highway 210, that's the 71st area, winded in Pine Forest. That's the I-295 corridor. It's going to clip from Highways 87, 301, 59, which is Hope Mills, Grace Creek, that's Rockfish, that's Stony Point, our entire, my entire half of the county on the east side of the river. Stedman, Wade, Vander, Falcon, Godwin, Bethany, everywhere, Highway 13, 24, 53, and 210. And the plant may not have a lot of smell, the plant may... And the plant may not have a lot of smell, the plant may do a good job, or a fairly good job of keeping their stuff picked up, feathers, but these trucks do not. These trucks are going to litter all these major roadways with feathers and with smell. And at the same time, all the roads I've named, where's the one place they all go through? The city of Fayetteville. By our restaurants, our grocery stores, our small businesses, our big businesses. It is a destruction of the image of the county and the city. Short term, a little bit, long term, a lot.
Counsel, at this time, we'll allow maybe about a one-minute break and allow folks who want to get up and leave to do that. Of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but we'll just give a little recess. Counsel, at this time, we'll move to item 7.0, which is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I move that we approve the consent agenda, item 7.0, with everything except item 7.05.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Wright, thank you, Mr. Arp. Counsel, is there a discussion on the consent? Seeing none, Counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. I just approve the agenda with the exception of 7.05, and that's unanimous of those members that are here. Mr. Arp, 7.05.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the Counsel, I'd like to have each of the items that are identified under Budget Ordinance Amendment 2015-2 to be discussed for an up and down vote.
So, am I clear, you're asking for three separate votes, is that what you're asking for, Mr. Arp?
Actually, there'd be four if we do all four of them, yes sir.
Four separate votes, okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, he says 20, 0...
Yes, sir, 7.05.
7.05.
Is there, is the motion on the floor, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Moan's second, discussion, Mr. Moan.
Can we also have staff give a brief overview of each of the four items that we discussed that are your previous work, couple of work sessions, the 20th and I think the 2nd of September? So, the audience knows what we're voting on here?
Absolutely, I think that's reasonable. Mr. Colvin, then Mr. McDougall. Oh, nope, Mr. McDougall. Nope, okay. All right. Then we will vote on the motion, which is to separate item .705 into individual votes. Counsel, please vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. With members present. Mr. Arp, that was your motion, how do you want to break that up? Do you want Transit to go first in the Fayetteville State project?
Yes, sir, if that's okay, I think we just go in the order as they're listed in the budget amendment.
Okay, Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. So, I think I heard it stated that your interest is considering these matters in the order that they're presented on the ordinance. So, by my reading of this document, the first item listed is Schedule A, General Fund. The second item is Schedule G, Transit Fund.
Going by the printed agenda, Mr. Voorhees. I don't know if that's separate from the...
I was looking at the ordinance itself. On the printed agenda, the way it's listed is Budget Office, Internal Audit, Strategic Planning and Organizational Performance.
Well, the first item's Transit Partnership with Fayetteville State University.
If you'll, excuse me, let me pick up the printed copy and see what it looks like. Okay, that's a summary of the items. So, if you'd like to take the Transit Partnership with Fayetteville State University, first, I'll try to refer you to the pertinent section that's here in the ordinance. As this is the adoption of a Budget Ordinance Amendment, the Transit Partnership with Fayetteville State University will be accomplished according to the Budget Ordinance, Section 1, Schedule G, which speaks to the Transit Fund. It identifies fees, other fees and revenues, intergovernmental revenues, and all other Transit Fund revenues with a total impact for that fund, a total of $8,202,507 is the revised amount. The revision totals $144,896. And that comes from a cooperative agreement with Fayetteville State University, which combined with other city sources, results in a new route and free service for Fayetteville State University students.
The actual budget impact, Mr. Voorhees, is what, sir? Okay, thank you. Counsel, is there a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Davy.
I move that we allocate the Budget Ordinance Amendment to reflect the Transit Partnership with Fayetteville State University in the amount allocated in the recommended action.
Heard Mr. Wright. Counsel, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Counsel, please vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, thank you. Mr. Voorhees, the second item on here is the Budget Office and Internal Audit Organization Performance Functions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to actually ask Lisa Smith, if she's around, to step forward and make sure I'm looking at the right line, because this is showing Schedule A, General Fund.
There's some combined items on that. As you know, Counsel, we had an opportunity to brief you at your May 28th work session, and then also at your August 20th work session about the proposal. The proposal includes several components. One is the creation of a Budget Office with a total staff of five positions, two of which already exist. So, it'd be a net add of three positions. The Internal Audit Enhancement would create an Internal Audit Office, staffed with three positions, two of which would be additional positions. The Strategic Planning and Organizational Performance Office, we already have a position that works with that function. What the proposal includes tonight is the addition of one additional net position for that function. Finally, with the creation of the Internal Audit Office, there are certain duties that are being completed now by the position that would transfer to the Internal Audit Function. So, what we're asking for is to backfill, if you will, those functions with the Financial Reporting Manager. The net result is the expenditure cost for the current fiscal year is projected to be about $904,000. And that's actually in some material that you also received as a part of your agenda material tonight. We're proposing that the city share of that cost be $509,000, which is pretty much already accommodated within our existing budget with the existing positions that we have, and that the balance of the cost be shared by the Utility Fund, at a cost of about $395,000 for fiscal year 2015. The allocation method for allocating the cost was based on the fiscal year 15 annual operating budget, and that's how that cost was shared. Just to also point out that the Budget Office and Internal Office are those functions that we're proposing to allocate between the General Fund and the Utility Funds. The Financial Reporting Manager and Strategic Planning Performance Management Position is proposed to be funded 100% by the city's general fund. There's also in your material, the proposed projected cost for an annualized period of time for fiscal year 16 as well, for your information.
And what is that budget impact, Ms. Smith?
The net impact to the General Fund will be about a $17,000 decrease in the fund balance appropriation. And then that other portion of the cost would be borne by a transfer from the Utility Fund, or a charge, if you will, to the, from the Utility Fund to the General Fund to pay that cost. And that's about $395,000.
Okay, Counsel, I apologize, I didn't have the lights turned on. I got Councilmember Moan first, Mayor Pro Tem Davy, then Mr. Colvin. So, we'll go in that order, and if you pressed your lights earlier and I missed you, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Voorhees. Got a couple of questions. The first one for Mrs. Smith, when you mentioned the annualized amounts in the document here for fiscal year 16, you know, I noticed it's, you know, 170-some thousand more. That's because we're already partially in fiscal year 15, and so next year would be a little bit more?
Yes, sir, we made certain projections about when we would fill the positions. We haven't assumed that we would fill them all at the same time. So, what fiscal year 16 represents is the annualized cost.
The whole cost.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then for Mr. Voorhees or a city attorney, we understand PWC has a contingency fund. And today, we received an email, you know, from both from Chairman Lowlier and Mr. Blanchard, showed the last two years' worth of expenditures out of that fund. And we see it fluctuates, depending upon, you know, what they're spending on each year. And to me, looking at this, this becomes a reoccurring cost, like our personnel are reoccurring, and how we typically don't try to use... We try to find reoccurring revenue streams for reoccurring costs. And my question would be, is, you know, do we have the authority to tell PWC which fund they're going to use, should they want to participate, you know, in this joint audit, budget, economic development-type function? Because typically, when we approach city staff and Counsel thinks we know what we like, then city manager, Mrs. Smith, you come back and tell us the best way we could possibly fund it. So, I'm just, you know, should Counsel be reaching down and telling PWC which fund to take some money out of for reoccurring personnel costs? When a contingency fund, typically, it can fluctuate year by year based on what their needs are. It's not a separate revenue stream, it comes out of both, I want to say, the electric and the water fund, but that's not a dedicated stream just for these personnel.
Right.
Is that fair to say, or do we have that authority, or...
Counselmember, if the question is whether the city council has the authority to appropriate the budget for the city and the city's utility, and to amend the budget for the city and the city's utility, my answer would be, the city council is the only body that has the authority to do that.
Now, I think, I'm sorry to try to clarify, I think the question was, if we're taking the money out of contingency this year, and it's a reoccurring expense, where's the money coming from next year?
The city council can choose to budget for it next year however you wish.
Well, how do you propose funding the reoccurring expense?
It'll be built into the base budget.
Okay, Mr. Colvin.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Mayor, I have two-fold question. One, how much is the annual contingency allocation for PWC each year?
I think in this particular fiscal year, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.4 million between both funds.
So, roughly three?
It's identified in the memo, but I think 3.4.
$3 million or so is set aside for various costs. I see anywhere on the breakdown that they remitted, anywhere from smart grid contributions to contract services to revenue recovery, so it's a variety of expenses that they choose to do, with the inclusion of an job cost reclassification for half a million dollars in 2013. So, my question is, is it common practice for a city government to be able to, the entire purpose of... The entire purpose of this is what? Can you explain that for us? The entire purpose of a centralized budget office being proposed is for exactly what? Can you clear that up for me?
Well, I would say to provide uniform budget preparation, analysis, and reporting to the governing board so that they will have transparency on all the funds that they provide governance and financial oversight to.
So the elected body, which is us, who are accountable to the people, basically will have more transparency and oversight over a commission that is an appointed resource that runs this particular department or commission? Is that... Am I understanding that correct, Mr. Voorhees?
I think that's an accurate statement, sir.
Okay. So is it common practice for local government or government body to be able to centralize and to be able to oversee and transparently see is different divisions like you proposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Crisp? Mike?
Ms. Smith, give me those figures again. You said $904,000 for the current fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Hmm?
Yes, sir.
And then you said $395,000 from the PWC?
Yes, sir.
For the same fiscal year?
That's a part of the $900,000.
A part of the $900,000.
Yes, sir.
And where do we anticipate PWC getting to $395,000 from their contingency fund?
That's what's been proposed. Certainly, I think, as the city manager has expressed earlier, if they wish to contribute an internal audit position, for example, or a budget position to support the function, it's not necessarily just cash. It could be a position that they could offer up in lieu of the contingency funds, or for that matter, they... If you actually look at their budget, their budget is a rather large number. It's not even isolated to contingency. Contingency is part of their operating fund.
What's the total number of people you anticipate for this Budget Office and Internal Audit Team?
Five in budget, two of the positions which already exist, so a net of three additional for budget, and then two additional positions for internal audit.
So a total of?
Five total for the budget, three total for the internal audit, the eight total.
Eight folk. Now, here's my question to you, because we're looking at this Budget Office, but internal audit. Will this office be responsible in some way for determining the accountability of city property?
That would certainly be under the purview of an internal audit function. It's looking at how you're safeguarding all of your assets, cash, equipment, and other property that you would have, both at your general operating facilities here as well as your utility facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim Davy?
There wasn't any other further questions? I was... Okay?
Mr. Dar...
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me a question. Just a couple of things. Mr. Colvin mentioned maybe a comparison, that other cities that have utilities similar to the city of Fayetteville, how do they... In their budget process, do they do collective budgets, and do they have collective internal audits that, you know, organizations that do these types of functions that you're aware of? I mean, how do you rack this back in your...
Thank you, Counselmember. I, you know, I think there's a wide variety of organizational structures across the country. The only other structure that has any similarity to ours in North Carolina is Greenville, and theirs is similar. Most of the organizations in North Carolina that provide utilities do it in a centralized way. One that comes to mind would be Winston-Salem Forsyth County's Utilities Commission, which runs a water and sewer utility as well as a solid waste utility. All the central functions there, like HR, finance, budget, audit, are all provided by the city of Winston-Salem in a central office. I'm not as familiar with Greenville. They may do some things more similar to us, but for the rest of the state, the central model seems to be the pattern.
And then, when we look at these additional positions, and there's eight of them, is that correct?
Seven.
Total of seven. Three of those positions are new persons.
Three in the budget, three additional positions in budget.
And two in the audit.
And those are additional to what we already have?
Correct.
And so the total cost of $904,490, so $905,000 for FY 15, and $1,079,000 for FY 16, that's the cost for these five people, or is that the five plus the additional people?
It's all the positions, both existing and proposed new positions.
Okay. All existing and new, because that's about 3% of the total budget for the city. If I break the city's point out, it's about 3.2%, that's why I'm asking.
Well, and there was also the Financial Reporting Manager and Strategic Planning Functions. I thought you were asking about budget and internal audit, but...
So there's actually two additional people?
To get to the 1 million number.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand the 1 million number. And then my last question is, are dealings, you know, there's been a shift in the way the Counsel wants to do business, and... But in that shift, have we consulted with PWC? What's PWC's position on this proposed action?
Well, I'd certainly invite Counsel to speak to them, that they are, some of them are here, to represent them. What I've heard is the straightforward question, how does it benefit the utility? And my response to that is, to the extent that the city council is the governing board and the city council believes they are benefited, it therefore benefits the utility. But that's a judgment for the council members to make.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Moan?
We're done with the first round then, sir? All the green lights?
I've got a couple of other green lights. Yours was in order. Do you want to finish?
I pushed the red button for round two. All the green was round one.
All right. So, Mr. McDougal, then Mr. Wright.
I don't know what round I'm in. I just heard some...
You're in both rounds right now.
That's good. Means I'm on top of things then. I just heard Councilmember Op throw out some numbers. I was really trying to be... Just listen, but 1% of $100 million, or $1 million of $100 million cannot be 3% mathematically. Well, if 155 million, 1 million, I'm just making, I'm trying to give you a little math, a good math lesson here. If it's 100 million and it's a million dollars, that would only be 1%. It couldn't be anymore. You said it was 3%. And I'm just telling you, mathematically, it could not be 3%. If it's a million dollars and you got a $155 million budget, or in this case, if it's $500 million, it couldn't be 3%. So, I mean, the number just didn't, you know, when you talk numbers, make a match at least, somehow or another, come at least close, but that didn't come close. That's all I'm saying to you. Secondly, this is an opportunity for us to be able to trim some fat. In other words, you don't have to spend additional monies if you already have positions. I see a lot of people standing around in different departments. I know y'all think I'm ludicrous, but I've taken the liberty just to walk through some places. And one day, I just walked through handing out flowers. Y'all think I'm ludicrous, but I'm just looking. A lot of people sitting around doing nothing. It's an opportunity for us to trim some fat, whether at Public Works Commission, because when I go there, they think I'm not, I'm just, I'm looking at everything. I look at everything. I look at everything, trust me. I even look at cigarette butts on the ground. And I see a lot of people doing nothing, walking the halls, standing around chatting. Maybe this is an opportunity for us to trim some of the fat that I've been hearing people say that we've got in government, and take some of these positions and consolidate them, and move them into these positions, and that's what I see. That's what I see us doing. I heard the city manager say this is a possibility, whether we spend new dollars or we move people into these slots, so... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Mr. Wright?
I have a sort of question and comment combined, based upon what I've heard tonight and the research that we've done in the numbers. The vision of the city manager, of course, given from the council, best practices. Initially, our idea of combining these budget offices, in your perspective, briefly, why initially did we want to go this direction?
So, in as few words as I could muster, which is a challenge for me, I guess I would say that, you know, coming to this organization about two years ago, I just tried to make a quick assessment of our capacity and the scale of our operations relative to the community we serve. And it's my professional opinion that we lack scale and depth in a number of key internal functions, and some of those functions include budget and audit, among others. This looks like an opportunity for us to scale to an appropriate level of staff so that we can provide the governing board of this city the appropriate information they need to govern. We did some benchmarking with peer cities. That's why we've chosen the staff levels that we provided here. And as we've discussed in the past, I believe that the fact that the city organization and the Public Works Commission organization, growing up separately over many years, has led to some disparate staffing levels, and I think we need to seriously consider changing that trend so that we can gain synergy and develop the total organization at the appropriate level for the scale of our city.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protim Davy?
Okay. I just wanted to get, I know we've thrown a lot of numbers around with the positions. Now, PWC already has, what, two positions that are kind of already doing this? Is that what I was told at one of our meetings?
We certainly stand to be corrected. Our staff belief is they have two budget staff, and they have two FTEs for audit, one of which is filled and one of which is not filled, is our latest understanding.
So that's four, for budget and internal. Okay. Well...
I was just going to clarify. I'm aware of at least one internal audit position at PWC. I'm not... At one point, they did have two, I'm not sure. At this point in time, if they have two positions.
Okay. Well, I'm just going off of the last meeting that we had, the joint meeting we had, and it was just discussed that there's members, staff members there that's working on this on a yearly basis.
How do we not know how many folks are in their department, and have we not asked?
I'm referring to Mr. Blanchard's comments at a previous meeting where he clarified, in the past, they've had two internal audit. I'm aware of one that's in the budget, and he said that should they have a need for an additional one, they would be in a position to reallocate. The one position for internal audit is the one that I'm speaking to. And then I'm aware that there are two people specifically that I'm aware of that work on budget at PWC.
Okay. So we already have people working there, and I guess the reason for this is to build upon that foundation and make sure that we're having collective, you know, a collective operation on both sides is what I'm thinking. Because I guess I just kind of break things up to different analogies. If you're thinking about your bills, and you're paying your bills, I don't know, for me, my bills are coming from one account to pay my bills, if it's my water, utility, car payment, whatever. And how it's working right now, I'm trying to break this down for the residents listening, how it's working right now is the city of Fayetteville, which PWC is a part of the city of Fayetteville, it's like having two different accounts. So if you're paying your bills, it's like paying your bills from two different checking accounts right now is what's happening. And what you all are trying to do is pay your bills from one account by having a centralized internal audit department. Is that...
I think that's an analogy that, you know, could be useful for some people to think about it.
So is that the reason why you all are moving forward? You're recommending to move forward on that so we're not having separate disbursements happening with two different accounts, but you're more having a oversight collective department that oversees this?
Well, I think that the council gets its information about the utility from a completely separate group of individuals in different forms at different times than you get the information from the rest of the city organization. Our ultimate goal would be that you have the same staff presenting the same information in the same format at the same time so that you know you're looking at apples to apples. Right now, you get the PWC budget in a different form at a different time, you get the city budget in a different form at a different time, the city analysts are different people, PWC analysts are different people, and you probably have never even seen them. So, you know, it's hard for us to unify our effort and our purpose and to come to, you know, what we can consider as a fully understood and presented set of books and budget documents unless we try to move in a more unified direction.
I just kind of have a statement and maybe just a few questions in it. I keep hearing the words "I believe" and, you know, they're separate things, and you made a great analogy, the separate checkbooks, and, you know, how do we bring everything together? They have a different budget. And what I have not heard, and maybe I misunderstood, but I haven't heard that we've had any communication to sit down to talk about this discussion of what we're having right now. It's, you know, "I believe," "I heard," but there's nothing saying this is what we've discussed. I'm not hearing that PWC and the city staff have discussed anything. It's just what we believe. Just a comment.
I think it was discussed at various meetings, recently at the special meeting.
But what I'm hearing tonight is "we believe" and things like that. We didn't even know the number, you know, we were going back and forth on employees. You know, we're talking a lot of money, and I feel that I'm not getting answers that everybody is 100% sure on.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Moan?
Thank you, Mayor Robertson. And we also talked about transparency, which I think is a good thing. And, you know, every year, PWC and the city, we have different bond ratings because we have different revenue streams for different customers. You know, we have multiple checkbooks, if you want to say, or funds. Mrs. Smith gave us a beautiful breakdown the other time of all the different funds we have within the city, which ones are encumbered, which ones aren't, which ones are restricted, which ones are general fund, which ones are unrestricted general fund. You've got the wastewater fund, the water fund, the electricity fund. Those are like separate, in my mind, separate checkbooks because certain monies go into certain checkbooks. And so even if we would have a combined audit or budgeting section, I believe, and I could be wrong, we would still have separate funds where money would, are received and money is dispersed. And I've only, this is only my third time, but I remember receiving, you know, capers every year from PWC and capers, you know, from Mrs. Smith and the external audits that come in, and I believe they've been unqualified for the last multiple eight, nine, 10 years, both PWC and the city of Fayetteville. You know, when I say the two different budgets, which then get rolled up and Counsel passes one budget ordinance that includes PWC and the general fund type monies. And so by saying transparency, increased transparency, we may have a combined staff, but I don't see receiving any additional information that I don't already receive if we ask for it during budget time or throughout the years. We do budget amendments throughout the year, almost every month. We do budget amendments throughout the year, almost every month. We approve purchase agreements that PWC does, that the city does, and it is Fayetteville, PWC. And then, Mr. McDougal, councilman, came up with an idea that was discussed at the 20th, to try to reorganize internally before we grow staff, because during the budget cycle, we went through 40, 50 vacant positions, line by line, one council meeting, and, you know, we're trying to identify which ones are actually necessary, which ones aren't. And this concept came before us, you know, three months ago, and it didn't pass totally. So, if we did have a combined budget office, we're still going to have individual budget analysts analyzing the different funds. We're never going to see those people. You know, we'll see Dwight, we'll probably see Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Broyles, but the budget analysts, they're still doing their budget analyst stuff on those different funds. So, can I get a better feeling of what additional transparency we're going to see, or what additional information we're going to receive that isn't already available to us? Just if that makes any sense, it's a concern versus.
Well, I think that, councilmember, one thing you can expect over some reasonable period of time is that you'll be getting a unified budget document instead of two different volumes in different formats. We go through a great deal of extra trouble every year to reconcile two different audits into a single set of financials. I mean, I find it unusual that we have the auditors go and audit this separate entity and treat it in such an individual way, and then come and audit the rest, and then we talk about reconciliation. I mean, it's all one organization. It's all one organization. But we act like it's not. And I hear people often talk about, you know, it's, the tail's wagging the dog. And I hear it said in the opposite way I would think of it. This is the dog, the city is the dog, PWC is the tail. The dog should wag the tail. And I don't know why it takes this community so much effort to straighten it out.
What'd you call me? Good one, mayor. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Mr. Colvin.
Thank you for, Ms. Smith and Mr. Voorhees for the presentation. I wanted to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt budget ordinance amendment 2015-2 to consolidate the budget office and internal audit organization and performance function as presented by Ms. Lisa Smith and Mr. Voorhees in reference to this.
Mr. Colvin, we do have three other speakers. Do you want to continue with that motion, or you want to let the other speakers?
Can they speak during discussion? I think we've all made one round, right?
Well, if it's about the motion, they certainly can.
Well, I withdraw with the, you know.
Just stand by and let me come back to you for the motion. Thank you. Mr. Arp, you're next, and then Mr. Chris, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Colvin, thank you. You know, I've been on record here now for a couple of years of saying that, you know, our budget process is convoluted, difficult to deal with. You know, since I came on the council, that's one of the first things I acknowledged was, you know, we got a city budget process, we have a PWC budget process, and why don't we use the same budget process? So I'm in full agreement that we need to have a unified process, specifically a unified timeline for the development of the budgets. I think we get way too far into the third quarter before we even really start deliberate budget discussions. And when you're talking about a $155 million budget for the city of Fayetteville, I think I got that right, Mr. McDougal, and a $300-plus million budget for PWC, I mean, that's some serious money. And I can say I was very uncomfortable personally voting on some of the previous budgets, because I didn't feel like I had full cognitive oversight of what we were discussing. So with that, I just want to say I'm in agreement that we need to look at the process to format the timeline. I guess my only concern is, we've got two award-winning departments. I mean, when we go back and we look at the Public Works Utility and we look at the city of Fayetteville, we've got two award-winning departments. My thought is, as we've worked on the steering committee, as we've worked on other ways of trying to find efficiencies, I'm not saying I'm opposed to having auditors, we've talked about that, the managers talked about that previously. But I guess my concern is, before we look to go out and hire additional people, maybe we look to merge some of these functionalities and then clearly identify that we do need these additional people to accomplish what we're going to accomplish. Because I just look at a million dollars and I go, wow. You know, we've got some award-winning departments, but we're going to spend another million dollars, do we really need to do that with the taxpayer and the rate payer's money? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Mr. Chris.
I do have some concerns. First one is. I do have some concerns, Mr. Mayor, and the first one is, I share Mr. Arp's statement about, I see a need for a budget office. I see that. But there are a number of things that are of concern to me here. One is, if we appropriate $904,000 for the current fiscal year from essentially contingency funds, and then how do we find the recurring money next year? I'm not, I can say it now, that I got a hindrance about going back to the well to raise taxes and rates, what have you. The second point that I want to make is, I, the internal audit is necessary. And I can give you some examples. And when I talk about internal audit, I'm talking about property accountability. Both organizations dealing with millions of dollars worth of property with no audit trail. I'll give you a classic example. Three Segways walked out of this city and nobody knows where they went. I haven't got a satisfactory answer yet. Last week, I was standing in the lobby and I saw a man rolling a brand-new chair. Where's the old chair? Okay? And every year, Dwayne, you buy X number of computers, iPads, game boys, well, not game boys, certainly not. But, you know, an audit trail is essential to protect taxpayers' investments. Now, the final concern I have is this, and this is the one. I don't want to create a budget office that takes away the PWC's ability to handle their electric funds and their water funds and do the business that they have to do over there. I don't want to create an office here that's going to take control of the PWC functions in terms of their ability to spend and do the things that they need to do. Okay? Now, if that's where we're headed, then I don't want that. But I do see a need for a uniform budget office. But I am on record as saying, I don't expect a budget office to take over the spending criteria and tie the hands of Mr. Blanchard and the commissioners in terms of their ability to handle their electric funds and their water fund. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Councilmember Wright.
Well, I just want to go on record saying as well, I agree that we do need a unified budget office. And really, I think it's a no-brainer for going forward, best practices for Fayetteville, PWC. We have a lot of smart people that has been working budgets for years. But unlike other municipal governments, we are unique in that the structure with PWC and our city, we're almost working two different organizations or two different entities in one city. And I think, for the most part, that that would gridlock us in some terms of budgeting as far as monies being spent in proper order. And it's very hard, I know, for the city manager to deal with two budgets and have to line those up. And I saw his stress this year, being my first budget for the city, in that I thought to myself, it would be so easier for us to come into one budget office, working together as a unit, as one city. And I think going forward, that would really ease up a lot of the strain when it comes to finding monies and for operations, emergencies, and things of that nature. So I don't really see what the strain is. And I understand, going forward, money spent to establish this, but I have a question for you. Do you think the money spent, the $900,000 and then the million next year to the city manager, that money is worth spending to bring that office together? And what would come out of that based on monetary benefits?
Great question, councilmember. First, let me have Mrs. Smith clarify what's new money versus what's already in the budget.
We are talking about a total of $900,000 for fiscal year 15, the one we're in now, but we're only talking about an additional $380,000 net.
Okay.
We already have about $526,000 in the budget already, so it's a net of 380.
A net of 380, okay.
And then next year, it's not an increase of a million, it's an increase of about $570,000. That's combined.
It's combined. So it's not a million, it's 500.
On an ongoing basis, about 570.
570, okay.
On an annualized basis.
So from a staffing perspective, this would put us roughly on par with our municipal peers in terms of the personnel resources that we have aligned at budget and audit functions. I think that's noteworthy, it's a laudable goal to give the governing board of the sixth largest city in North Carolina, the staff, tools they need to handle the budget and audit functions.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protim Davy.
Thank you. What I, I've heard some great comments from everybody, and as councilmember Arp said, we have two award-winning entities, and I think by having this uniform budget process, we can continue to win awards, probably even more awards, because our things are more unified. As councilmember Chris says, I think we just really need to focus on what's the need for going into this budget cycle right now. And as you said, city manager, that in regards to the recurring costs, that you would make sure to build that in the budget. So I think we need to just focus on the scope of what you need to move forward to unify this budget, and that when you come back to us, each budget, when you come back to us with the budget, that you will build the recurring costs in the budget. So with that said, you're only asking for us today to focus on moving the budget office and internal audit office to be a more unified function. That is your request today, correct?
Yes, Mayor Protim, and that's what's in the ordinance.
With the budget amendment.
With the budget amendment, okay.
All right. We've got Mr. Colvin that wants to make a motion, but before that, Mr. Voorhees, again, the $1,79,308 that is a reoccurring expense next year and for the years to follow, if not more than that. Where's that money coming from in a tight budget year like we just finished?
Well, again, that's the total. As Mrs. Smith said, about half of that's already in our current base budget on the city budget side, $494,000. So that's what is at issue for the Public Works Commission budget, $494,000. I think we calculated that was something like 14% of their contingency.
Okay, so, but you can't keep pulling money out of the contingency every year?
No, but I think that, you know, that they have a base, they budget contingency every year, well in excess of that amount, which suggests to me that that's really in the base.
So you want to continue to fund this with PWC funds?
I want the PWC source of funds, the utility, to pay an appropriate share of the city council's overall budget and audit costs.
Okay. Mr. Colvin.
With that being said, I think with, like was mentioned with my colleague, Mr. Crisp, that the establishment of an enterprise fund would still mean that the dollars that come in from the electric fund and from the water fund would have to be used for the functions that are related to those two departments.
Absolutely.
So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we adopt budget ordinance amendment 2015-2 with the establishment of the budget office and internal audit organizational performance functions as described in the presentation.
All right, that's Mr. Colvin, Mr. Hurst. Discussion on the motion. Singing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is six to four with councilmembers Jensen, Arp, Robertson, and Moan voting against. Those voting for, councilmember Crisp, councilmember Wright, councilmember Davy, councilmember Colvin, councilmember Hurst, councilmember McDougal.
Mr. Voorhees. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're now.
Fiber is next.
On to fiber. This is a pretty short issue. Council's briefed already that we have a new level of support for the fiber operations proposed at $80,000. And the amendment before you, the budget ordinance amendment before you, will appropriate $80,000 in the current fiscal year. It will also settle up with the Public Works Commission by splitting the outstanding bills from the prior fiscal year.
And you're good with that, Ms. Smith? Okay. Council, action?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approved the fiber amendment to the budget ordinance as presented.
Second. Second by Mr. McDougal. Is that a discussion light or a vote? Mr. Chris, discussion?
Yes, councilmember, we stopped payment on our fiber charges last fiscal year, and we've agreed to split the unpaid bill 50/50 between the commission and the council's budget, or the city's budget. The proposal was from the chairman, and I agreed to make that recommendation.
Any other questions? All right, singing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you.
And the final action, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this evening is two items added to the budget ordinance for the fiscal year that we're currently in. We've labeled them in the attachment as section 14 and section 15. These set total expenditure amounts for $130,000 for sponsorship activities, and those sponsorship activities must adhere to council's policy on sponsorships and acknowledged contribution by the city of Fayetteville. That policy will come to you at the next meeting for adoption. It's the same policy that the commission has adopted. And section 15 is a similar item where it's clear that the commission sets utility rates and utility rate reductions and facility impact fees and any waivers for economic development projects that's in their purview. Then it sets $315,000 for contribution to the alliance and $10,000 to the Southeastern Partnership for economic development purposes, and then sets out that any additional economic development expenditures would come to council for approval.
Mr. Arp, then Mr. Colvin.
If it pleases the council, I'd move that we agree to the amendment. You got a question? I'll defer to Mr. Colvin then.
Thank you, sir. I was just asking, Mr. Voorhees, those figures you gave, were those the maximum amounts? Or though, you know, can you clarify that? You were saying those amounts.
Yes, sir, those are the amounts that we understand to be currently aligned in the Public Works Commission budget. They're not appropriated at that level of detail, they're just covered within their much larger appropriation. So we're proposing to call them out and set them as a limit in detail, and we believe that they cover those expenses as currently expected.
So their current level's not a maximum amount, so years from now, if contributions.
Annually, that language would change annually as the council sees fit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Arp.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council approve the Public Works Commission Economic Development and Community Support Amendment and the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. Council discussion on the question. Ms. Jensen? All right, singing no discussion, council, I'll ask for your. All right, seeing no discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote. That is an eight to one vote with Mr. Moan voting against. I'm sorry, nine to one. It is getting late. Would like to recognize former Mayor Marshall Pitts who's joined us this evening, welcome Mr. Pitts, glad to have you here joining us. Council, we removed eight point zero one from the agenda, so we'll go to eight point zero two, which is the presentation of the Appointment Committee and recognize Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, members of council, the Appointment Committee, which consists of Mayor Nat Robertson, Councilmember Crisp and myself, met on Wednesday, August the twenty-seventh, to review applications that citizens submitted to fill vacancies on the city's boards and commissions. We appreciate the hard work by our city clerk, Ms. Pamela McGill, and Deputy City Clerk Jane Starling, as well as the attendance of, at our meeting of the staff liaisons. With that, I move for council to accept the Appointment Committee's recommendations. Option one, for the following citizens to serve on the boards and commissions, that would be Board of Adjustment, Ms. Michael Haywood, Fair Housing Board, Ms. Sherry Siller-Mack, and Mr. John Shakowsky, Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit or Fact, Ms. Jessica Durham, Fayetteville City Planning Commission, Ms. Shalonda Crimidy, Dr. William Fiden, Mr. Richard Wagner, Mr. Jared Welch and his alternates, Ms. Emily Neff Sharon and Mr. Claybin Low. For the Fayetteville City Zoning Commission, Mr. Jack Cox, Mr. Romaine Donald Stanley, Mr. David Atkinson as an alternate, and Mr. Andre Washington as an alternate. Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission, Mr. Michael Burns, Ms. Sheila Cuffey, Mr. Mike Fountain, Ms. Antoinette Morris, Ms. Georgiana Pinkney, Ms. Susan Reynolds, Ms. Kathy Waddell, and Mr. Brian Weir. For the Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Mr. Robert Lentz, Ms. Joyce Malone, Ms. Jean Walker. For the Fayetteville Finance Corporation, Mr. William Brooks, Mr. C. Keith Love, Ms. Lisa Smith, and Mr. Ted Voorhees. For the Historic Resources Commission, Mr. Nicolette Les, Lisa. Joint City and County Appearance Commission, Mr. Roger Roop. Joint Fayetteville Cumberland County Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, Ms. Dorothy Adams. And for the Fayetteville Public Works Commission, Mr. Wade Fowler.
Second.
Mr. Hurst with the motion, Mr. Crisp with the second, council discussion or nominations from the floor. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Oh, council, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button, please vote again. That is nine to one with Councilmember Jensen voting against, thank you. Eight point zero three is the appeal for the ramp. Mr. Shuford, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is an appeal from the decision on the ramp board. It's before you properly and you have in your packet, staff report, various pieces of correspondence regarding the appeal, the findings of the ramp board and related code sections, and I ask that you enter those documents into the record of tonight's proceedings. I'll give you a short summary of the situation. We had a case where there was a third violation of a solid waste code. As you know, ramp requires us to place into ramp program anytime there is a chronic violation history, in this case, this was the third one, and that was verified on May sixth, two thousand and fourteen. On May twelfth, a ramp registration notice was mailed to the owner, Mr. Clarence Daniels, advising him to register within ten business days, and we did not hear from him. In later, a letter was mailed in June to the owner containing a ramp registration revocation, and that also included the appeal options available to the property owner. The revocation basically means that he would be unable to rent the property for a period of one year. At this point in time, the owner appealed and a hearing date was set for July thirtieth. This date proved to be unsatisfactory for Mr. Daniels and a new hearing date was set for August thirteenth. The ramp appeal hearing process requires the owner to be present. At this meeting, Mr. Daniels did not appear, however, his attorney, Mr. Marshall Pitts, was there in attendance. Mr. Pitts indicated to the board that he did not know why his client was not present and he requested the hearing to be postponed. Board considered that suggestion but chose not to follow it and they subsequently voted to deny the appeal. Staff has reviewed the record and feels the ramp board did act appropriately in denying the appeal. That's my presentation, but I do want to point out that Ms. Lisa Harper, our Assistant City Attorney, is present to represent the ramp board and certainly is available for any questions. I'm going to ask her if she has anything to add to what I have presented. And at this point, you probably would like to either ask questions of me or Ms. Harper or hear from the, of the appellant.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford, Councilmember Crisp with a question.
Mr. Shuford, you said a solid waste violation, specifically what does that mean and how long?
Well, it's a, there were three separate, within a period of a year, Mr. Crisp, there were three separate situations in which there was debris or other trash in the yard, which is what we call a solid waste violation.
Is this a single-family dwelling?
Yes, sir.
And three occasions?
Three occasions within a year, the way the ramp ordinance works is that after the second violation, we send out a letter to the property owner saying that a third violation will cause them to enter into ramp. That registration has a fee of a thousand dollars. It has proved to be an extraordinarily effective deterrent to chronic code violation in the city. It's almost stunning how few properties enter into ramp because no one wants to pay the thousand-dollar fee, nor do they want to be subject to the potential of having their ability to rent the property for a year taken away from.
At the time of these citations, was the property vacant or occupied?
That I don't know, Mr. Crisp, I would assume it was occupied by a tenant.
Well, what is the basis of the appeal? Is that a question I need to ask Counselor Pitts?
I believe you should ask the appellant the exact basis of the appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Mayor, I apologize, I need to interject. Based on the, based on the ordinance, the council can only make its decision based on the record, and so we need to be careful in terms of the direction that we're going in terms of getting into the substance of the appeal. The issue here really tonight is somewhat of a challenge in that the board denied the request for the continuance and therefore made its decision without actually having a full-blown hearing, which creates the challenge for the council in terms of your ability to hold up the decision of the board. Really, tonight, because there was no hearing at the lower level, your option is either to uphold the decision of the board or remand the item back to the board for a hearing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Colvin, Mr. Wright, and Mr. Arp.
Mr. Shuford?
Yes, sir.
Now, to my understanding, the purpose of having a board is so that a due process will take place?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
According to Ms. McDonald, you're saying that the board denied the due process by refusing to have a continuance, and so now is that why this is on our agenda tonight? Can you explain to me the normal process for a ramp?
Well, the normal process would have been for the property owner to attend the hearing, that the hearing would evaluate the, any extenuating circumstances the property owner wanted to present about their circumstance, why they should not have had a revocation of their ramp registration. In this case, the property owner did not respond to our initial effort to contact them with regard to the fact that they had entered ramp once they had the third violation. So we didn't hear from them, so we sent them a letter saying that they were now into the revocation phase of the process. So at that point in time, we did get contact and at the, and a hearing was scheduled, but at the property owner's request, it was moved to another date and that date was shared with the property owner, of course. Property owner obviously is retained counsel and the council was there at that meeting, but the property owner was not. So I believe at that point in time, the board took the position that there had been ample opportunity to address the situation in some effective way and it had not been taken advantage of by the property owner.
So clarify what was meant when the city attorney stated that no hearing was held? So even if he was present or not, they wouldn't go through the process of having a hearing, allowing his attorney or some other representative to speak on his behalf?
Well, the difficulty is, is that the ordinance itself requires the property owner to be present and even though Mr. Daniels had representation at the hearing, there could not be any consideration of the case beyond deciding whether or not to approve the appeal, deny it, or to postpone action.
Thanks, sir.
So if I could clarify, Councilmember Colvin, so essentially, the board made its decision based on the record, the documents that were submitted. Councilmember Crisp was going beyond those documents in terms of his questions about whether it was a tenant, those type of things, and so that's what I'm saying in terms of the board made its decision based on the documents and made a decision to deny the request for a continuance. So at this point, the purview of the council is either to uphold that decision or remand it back for a hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Wright?
Given the situation, it would be difficult for us to make a decision based upon our lack of information. If we cannot ask questions based upon the decision that was made by the board?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, but there was no hearing, so we cannot really, because I have some questions, but...
That's correct.
If I can't ask the questions, then how can I make a decision?
That's correct.
So thing we need to do is send it back to you.
That's certainly one of your options, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
I will say that the record does reflect what you have in your packet. You have the correspondence that we provided to the property owner, the property owner's decision to appeal, and the further correspondence that occurred over this period of time.
Mayor Pro Tem Davy.
Is it public? Is it information that we can take into consideration why the person was not present at the hearing? Is that public information for the council to know or for the listeners to know why?
I suspect Mr. Pitts will share with you the reason why he, his client was not there.
It was in the written documents, huh?
The, what we heard from our conversation with Mr. Daniels was that he was affected by debilitating panic attack the day of the hearing and was unable to not only attend but to communicate his condition.
Okay, now, when will the next, I guess ramp meets on a case-by-case basis, correct?
That's correct, they do not have a normal schedule because the infrequency of the cases.
Okay, so now we know publicly, I mean, I knew that, but I just wanted to make sure the listening audience knew exactly what happened. So moving forward, if this, if it is decided by council to send it back, you know, there will be a specific date set and then hopefully we won't have this back and forth? Will it be kind of a directed that this would be the public hearing, it'd be expressed, and then this should not be coming back to council?
Well, Ms. Davy, if we have the ramp hearing again, there are a variety of possibilities. The owner may or may not attend again. If the owner does attend, we probably will have the full hearing, in which case there'll be a much more elaborate record than what you have before you tonight. If the owner is not satisfied with the decision made by the ramp board, the owner can also appeal and we could be back before you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Crisp.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Madam Attorney, do we get to hear from this gentleman's attorney tonight? Or we've got to make this decision in a vacuum?
That's correct.
Which is correct? Then I am of the opinion we need to send it back because I think the citizen is entitled to due process, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. McDougal, then Mr. Hurst.
Am I in order to make a motion that we, I don't know, city attorney used some language I'm not familiar with, remain or remain, but I'd say send back, but to the board? Am I in order to make that motion?
Would you allow Mr. Hurst to ask his question first?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, it was just a comment to Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Chalmers, it was just simply that, you know, I just want to make clear that Section fourteen dash one-one-four is clear and that due process was given, and we need to support ramp and this board for the decision they made, so that's why, that's my feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst, Mr. McDougal.
I need to ask the city attorney for the language that she used and when she gave us our two options, she used the word remain or re... All right, send back, send back to the board. Mr. Mayor, I move that we send back this particular issue to the board.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDougal, seconded by Mr. Colvin, is there a discussion on the item? Discussion. Mr. Arp, then I saw Mr. Crisp, then Mayor Pro Tem Davy.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I certainly appreciate the graciousness the council is willing to show in allowing us to go back. However, I do want to say, I agree with Mr. Hurst. The ramp process is very much needed in our city, I think the board does a very good job and in this case, you know, the only reason I'm going to agree with the motion as proposed is I just want to make sure every effort's made for due process, but, you know, not getting your mail is not an acceptable reason, an illness is an acceptable reason and I would think, you know, our staff is very compliant and if someone calls and says, hey, I've got an illness for a reason, that we'll go to extenuating circumstances to reschedule and I think we saw that in our packet, it was rescheduled at one point. So I think grace this time, but after this time, no grace.
Crisp?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. It brings a question that I think we need to examine, Mr. Shuford, that is, for example, right in my neighborhood, there are two homes owned by military members that are for rent right now and if they're renting, then they're citing a violation. I don't think it's going to be feasible for either of those two officers to come to a hearing, so we may need to relook the ordinance in that sense, okay? I understand the ordinance says that the owner needs to show up and be heard, but there are going to be circumstances, this is military town, and we got people in Afghanistan, we got them in Africa, we got them soon to be Syria, I guess, but... we've got them soon to be Syria, I guess, but you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I think we have to look at it, because there's going to be circumstances where the owner cannot-- cannot show up. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Pro Tim Davy.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
Thank you, Councilmember Crisp. And I think that was-- we had a really good discussion about that when we were trying to create the ramp program, and I believe that clause is in there. I just want to reinforce what many people are saying, that, you know, we understand this is a specific situation, but we want to make sure that these boards and committees that we appoint people to, that they spend their precious time working hard on, that we do allow them to do their due diligence and come back to us with, you know, their verdict, just like any other committee and board. And the ramps has been around for how many years, and this is the first appeal that we've had. So, I mean, that says a lot about our citizens out there working on this ramp committee. So thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I just wanted to say that the ramp program is a great program, and we want to support that wholeheartedly, because it's a tool that we use here in the city as far as our image, housing. It goes into everything as far as crime, everything else. So we don't take that lightly at all. I think the step that we did not take in that we did not have a hearing before you brought it to, the council gave us kind of like no choice but to send it back for due process. But we support ramp one hundred percent, and thank you for the good job and the good work that you all doing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Seeing no further questions, council, I'll ask for your vote on the motion. Madam Clerk, that is a nine to one vote. Mr. Hurst voting against.
Thank you.
And council, I'm looking for a motion for nine point zero.
A motion to adjourn.
Mr. Art, Mr. Wright, thank you all very much. Have a good night.